October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. We're open at six oh two. The Board of Selectmen meeting is going to be audio and video recorded, uploaded to YouTube, the government channel for future reference. I have a motion to approve warrants WR twenty-four zero eight.
David.
Bye. I just have some comments on it. This ACO payment is a stipend. All of the other stipends of this year, forty. No reason for this to be. Wax on. Not if I. If Paul would be supportive. Actually.
Close the year.
Public session. Anybody here for a public session that wants to give us information? Anything state your name?
Yes, Paul Ross Shutt from Gaffney Road. I just want to quickly bring up the situation where I think it's going to become a safety issue once we get freezing weather. The house on sixty-seven Maple Street, I believe, is owned by Mr. Savarovich. It's discharge and water out of a basement window which goes down his driveway and then runs down New Grantry Road. Now, years ago, when Lauren Stone had the house and was still alive, she had the same situation. And at that time Elliot Starbitt, who was on the Board of Selectmen, actually went to the house and spoke with Martin and with her permission, moved the discharge to the back of the house and that corrected that. They rehabbed that house and they've moved that discharge back to the front window. I'm just going to approach the table for a second, but this really demonstrates what's going on. There's the discharge, there's the water running out, and then it just runs around the sharp curve. I think Kevin, you can attest to where it used to be. And what would happen is you get like two or three feet of ice right at that bad curve. People coming up towards the center of town trying to avoid the ice would come around that corner on the middle of the road. Anybody going the other way, there was just not room for two cars at the time. So really, it's something that needs to be corrected before the weather gets cold.
Listen, number ten eighty-nine, New Grantry Road. And what happened to my pedestrian signs that you so proudly told me you'd ordered?
They put them up.
They're there?
Yeah.
I looked.
What's that?
I looked for them.
I wish you would because they're out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next Board of Assessors.
They will be passing as Diane put it, they get, they'll be on the next agenda.
Really want to go on your next.
Yes.
General. Strategic submissions.
I, that's my first question. I'd like to know the status of the invoice. It's taken from us and it said it would be handled, but we'd like to know what happened to it.
I contacted like from the company. That's her response. I don't know how the board would like to proceed with the invoice.
I had concern that it didn't seem as though the contracted individual that we were working with provided us sufficient product because it was not the, I guess it was a change in the pattern of when a signature was required. In the past, it was after the award was granted. And in this case, it was required for submission. And I thought I heard that that was on the actual grant request. And so I felt like we were getting a bill for eighteen hundred dollars. And yet, the individual that we contracted with, we couldn't submit the grant application. And so we're out eighteen hundred dollars. So I was hoping that the company would come back and apologize and make it right. But from her email, from her email, it doesn't look like they've accepted any responsibility for it. Kind of quit it back on the town.
Yes and no. They did the work. They have a packet that we can submit in the next grant application. That's our work, not things. So. I think we can. Let's hear that and submit it for the next round. How do we know that?
Yeah.
And that's something the state did. They didn't do it.
Yeah.
State made that change.
Sure.
And didn't notify anybody.
Yeah.
You're right. All of the ones were unabsued.
I definitely think, you know, that it was miscommunication from multiple places. And it's unfortunate. And then maybe now, if we look at who can sign for our grants going forward, something like this wouldn't be held up from being submitted.
Another thing on the grants. Items one and two. That was strategic. Those are police department.
Oh, part of the eighteen hundred.
Yes, they should never have had that.
No, that's already deducted.
So you know, that was.
Okay.
Maybe it's not.
Yeah.
I believe we said the last time we would. If you want to rush. That's a true.
Yeah, no, yeah. Certainly a true to come out of the council on aging.
No, absolutely not.
Yes, so that payment hasn't been submitted as we were waiting to see if it would come out of our. Yeah, so the police paid theirs. There was one for the Board of Selectmen's office that was already on there that's been deducted. So it will be made and is eighteen seventy. Wish a payment come from.
We set up.
Just to make sure.
Yeah.
Anything else on that?
None on that. I have other things, but.
Enough, you're still up.
You're still up?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We have been granted permission to go to find neighbors and we need a certificate of insurance. It can go from December to April first, and I know Mary Bell's already working on it.
I already have it.
You already have it, all right. So. Okay, I was just checking the status of it. We'd like to ask you to appoint Claire Hendra and Judy Menard to the Council on Aging. I believe they have both their. An application to come out and make it a call.
So I have a question. It looks as though one of the positions, I'm just curious, is I thought that position was filled. The treasurer position.
It is.
So.
The treasurer at this point is Lucy. And we're looking going forward that perhaps I specifically will need help with some of the financial situations. And Claire and Paul have been wonderful in stepping up. And Claire has agreed to go on the Council on Aging to perhaps be an interim or to perhaps help with those financial things. We don't have much by way of records as to what's happened previously or anything. And we need to sort all of that out. And Claire's been nice enough to step forward to help with that.
I guess.
Look.
So would this be appointment to the Council on Aging and then as an interim treasurer for the time being?
I would make it true. Ask a question. True. My understanding, wait, some second. My understanding is that Lucy was appointed treasurer.
You have to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Rick Hendra, I'm on the Council on Aging. My understanding is that Lucy was appointed to the treasurer's position during the COVID period when we didn't have a functioning council on aging. And that makes sense. But now we do have a functioning council on aging. So could we go back to electing our treasurer? The fact that the council's an agent, they all like their own office was elected their own, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. They were functioning. So that's true.
And when I came to ask about the position before we were appointed, before most of us were appointed, I asked if we could elect our own officers and the answer was yes. And Lucy spoke to the fact that she was the treasurer at that point and the Board of Selectmen had been appointing the treasurer so she would remain. But at this point, given the situation, it seems necessary for us to go forward with something else.
Bill for what?
Right.
I think that because she's on the Board of Selectmen and the Council on Aging, the issue of her continuing as treasurer would be best handled by the Council on Aging, talking to her about whether or not she would be able to continue in that role. I feel like it would be inappropriate to remove her from that position without communicating with her.
We don't want to hurt anyone's feelings, but we also have the necessity of moving forward with.
But I would move to.
We're not going to remove anybody, just pedal for luck.
For me to fill in until Lucy's feeling better. You know. That things keep moving forward, that's all.
I would be okay with appointing both Judy Menard and Claire Hendra to the Council on Aging.
And then would you look in ourselves?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Second. David.
Hi.
We're wondering about continued support for a Christmas gift card from the Select Board for seniors over seventy-five. It's been done in the past. And I guess last year or the year before. And we wonder if that could continue.
Where does the money come from?
It's in truss. Truss right now.
Could I get more information on that? I saw it in a book from like nineteen thirty-six or something.
We'd also like some be considered to have the cap on the revolving account be raised to ten thousand to conform with other committees and boards. I know that we are new and the revolving account for the Council on Aging is new. Currently, we are not at our five thousand dollar cap. But wishful thinking, what if we got a major donation and we went over the five thousand? I would not want to, I would want it to be used in the like of a donation, not to the general fund of the town.
That has to go in the annual town meeting.
Maybe it has to be special.
Oh, because it's an amendment of a, if it was a new revolving account, right? Because at the last one, we just increased. For health.
Don, if I may?
Yes.
I could help them craft the request for an article to be submitted to the Select Board to put on that, you know, for the next meetings.
Okay.
When does the warrant open? Close?
Aside, yeah.
Oh, you haven't even decided yet, okay. We're not late then.
We, I have a question about the insurance liability for drivers for senior center activities. If we were to, like, we took a trip to the Bridge of Flowers and it was a carpooling situation. Since then, in talking with other senior centers, I'm told that they are not allowed to transport any seniors in Council on Aging personal vehicles. And I wondered what the town of Oakham, what their position on it is.
So something we should run by our carrier. They'll call the carrier. If that's on that. I think they're going to stop. Maybe there's something, I don't know.
It limits what we can do as far as trips outside of Oakham. That's, that's the.
Right, right. I'm not sure if there's any riders that can go to Oakham. Maya take care of that.
And I have a request that all communications be sent to me, the Chair of the Council on Aging, including all financial reports from the accountant mailed. And I drafted a letter to support that. And it's important to us so that activities are not duplicated by numbers of people answering email and or phone. We have no phone at this point. Because we can't, well, we can retrieve email messages now. But there were four of us who can retrieve and it's never decided. Some of us, three of us have decided how we deal with that. We don't open the email or if we open it and it's for outreach, for example, then Janice gets an immediate call to cover outreach and so on. But if it were to be deleted, we have no access, we have no recourse to. If someone's in need, how do we answer a need if we don't know about it? So we have no phone at this point and we'd like everything to be sent to the Chair first and then I can disseminate to whoever, Jan for outreach or Rick for the Herald or whatever needs to be done. The other thing that happens is activities could be duplicated and that's a lot of work for people. One person makes up an activity. Melanie has her calendar already and says, oh, I can't do that now because something is in its place. So that's a request being made.
I think it's great that we have a active Council on Aging. It seems very appropriate that all communication go through the Chair, including financial sign. Now, I noticed that you weren't on the list.
We aren't on the list.
So we would need to let the accountant know. I'll give them. I think I forwarded.
You forwarded what you had, yes. And then, but we are not on the list to receive it first. Well, not first, but at all. At all.
Yeah, you brought it to our attention and she did tell me that she's adding it to the, she didn't know.
Looks like she needed permission and like.
Right, that's why I put it on the list. Yeah, it'll go to the COA email.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's all done.
Is there a donation account for the senior center? Is there any kind of account that's? We've seen evidence that there have been donations, but we see no accounting of where they go and what happens to them. There's no friends, no friends account. It's just the senior.
I hope there is a donation account. I don't know.
Because we would, we would like to know that going forward. Again, going to other senior centers, they have elaborate trees that are set up to commemorate people for their donations and that sort of thing. And we have no idea of what's happened before or, so we'd like to establish something going forward.
I will let Lori know to send all the financials to the COA. And Claire, I did give you her email.
Yes.
So you can then, you know.
And I helped with Wendy and Wendy took the same list, so I was kind of in between people. So.
I'd be surprised that we're allowed to have a donation account.
It is allowed. Yeah.
How do you account for it?
It's the accountant stays.
Okay, so it does have to have.
Oh, yeah, there's a friend.
Yeah. It doesn't seem like we've had this.
I think they do. I don't, I don't see it. I believe that there is. Because in the reports that Lori sends, it's just the basic department. But if you ask her for that specifically, I'm sure she can pull it up for you.
Yeah, there is the expenses.
Right.
Been allocated.
No, right.
And the accounting on the formula grant? Not seeing anything.
I have the account number in the office.
Okay. We've seen nothing as to how that's kept track of. I guess these two kind of go hand in hand, like confirmation of what actually belongs to the senior center and what does not belong to the senior center. I know I have a we down there that's mine and I'll label it. But we have a need for a computer and a printer. All have disappeared without warning or adequate explanation. Is the computer a personal computer or was it meant to serve the senior center in the Council on Aging? Mary Bell was nice enough, I did ask, and she said Lucy wanted us to have space. She's out, so the computer is gone, the desk is gone, the file, everything just kind of disappeared. And somebody told me I should have called the police because we had no warning. We had no indication that any of that was going to happen.
The printer was purchased with conservation, so that was conservation's printer. I think that Lucy being on there too, just kept it downstairs in her little nook of office and would have used it. So I think that that's where. Yep, it's in the conservation office.
Was it laptop?
So as such, we have one that Lucy gave to Melanie, but it's very old and it will not support any updates at this point. And it's very slow. So in essence, we have no computer for the Council on Aging. And it's my understanding that originally the Council on Aging had a spot where seniors could come in and use a computer to do whatever they wanted, whether it was view pictures of their grandchildren or pay a bill or research. And we have no capability for that at this point at all.
Is that laptop that you were using? Is that one?
We don't know. We, we have no idea.
Was that two of us? Yeah, that gets them looking.
Right, that, that new printer, that new laptop, the latest laptop was recent. It's a newer one, so I don't know where that funding came from, but it was, you know, newer. It wasn't, I would say within the last year.
And when Lucy got that and she gave one that she hadn't used, she said in three years to Melanie. And we tried to ask, I mean, Melanie's a geek. She's tried to get into it. It's so slow and I'm sure it will not, it's not good for security and I'm sure it can't be updated.
You have eighteen hundred and seventy dollars potentially to buy a computer.
True, that's what they do. We get the quotes from CM Geeks.
Usually I'll reach out, kind of what you're looking for and he'll give recommendations. And then he'll order them usually grouped out and then set them up. So that's an option.
The Board of Health purchased three and I think they were like six hundred dollars a piece.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're not super expensive. The expense is CM Geeks installing software. That was, I think, five hundred dollars.
Between three and five, something. Was it Microsoft three sixty-five that they installed? No.
Not on that one, no.
So what was it? When installing?
Windows.
Yes, very basic.
We just needed to.
Oh, I would think.
A computer, a laptop was purchased for Tom Wilson so that he could work from his home when he was ill. What ever happened to that one?
It's brand new, it's good in there. Yeah, I've never used it. Yeah.
We just reassign it. See your way. Right, no, it hasn't been used.
See, we wouldn't know until we asked whether that was a personal computer or not. We understand it was personal, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, meantime, it was going to be for Tom and then with the hopes of a new accountant, they were going there, but no one's been.
And the printer? Is that a possibility or not?
But they're not that expensive if you want to look around and, well.
Before you do anything, clock the Paul McKenzie. Because he's going to match the printer to your computer. We've been through this many times.
Steve Donjer from Ocam here. Quest question. How do donations work if I wanted to donate a brand new computer printer?
If it's a piece of equipment, the Board has to accept it. That's it.
Okay.
So you'll have it tomorrow?
Yeah, no, I don't, I mean, I can get a brand new computer and printer and donate it, I don't know, by tomorrow, but before the end of the year, I could definitely get something for you guys. If it's, you know, I don't know if it's a tax donation or how I do it, but if I can get information on that, I would love to donate to the senior center and give them something that they can actually use and is functional.
Great point. Start using the computer that you have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if Mary Bell could send me any information in regards to what the process is and I can purchase one from Dell with a printer, brand new, and then if CM Geeks can set it up, so, not that I don't want to manage it. You know, I don't mind donating equipment to our wonderful seniors that embrace our town. So.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, anytime.
To the point of the questions around equipment, I believe there's actually a bylaw that says that we're supposed to on an annual basis report.
Supposed to do inventory.
Inventory. And I don't think we have any idea what we have.
It's been no inventory for fifteen years.
So. Part of one of the, you know, things that I brought up was a bylaw review, but we have bylaws that we don't follow. So either if we review the bylaws first and decide if some of these need updating. But I think in light of the fact that equipment is here and not here, it's probably a good idea to initiate an inventory.
Yes, the question is that.
The other thing is that Paul McKenzie has a list of all the stuff that he has purchased for the town and wherever it was assigned to. So we do have that list.
Yeah. I mean, I know the Board of Health has gotten iPads and a computer from the state, but it wasn't necessarily turned over to Paul.
Okay.
But that might be a process, a policy. We'd say if you get equipment, it should all be, get an inventory tag.
Yeah, yeah.
And can I ask a question about that, Lucy? Is there a certain value that has to be in the input? I mean, we have, we have lovely decorations that are not really worth a whole lot. Do we, would we have to, is it just big pieces of equipment over two hundred dollars or over?
And Barbara had asked about, well, no, maybe you didn't, but you asked me last week about like the kitchen. So the Board of Health inspected the kitchen, which is really an inspection for the building's kitchen. But there's a question about whose kitchen is that? So I think it would be good to have clarification on what's the role of the Elder Services of Worcester, their food program and our property, the town's property. and our property, the town's property, what, what the access does, do we have to our own space? It just seems like there's a lot of signs up of what you can and can't do, but it's our building. And I think even going to the fax line and all of that, I think, understanding, but the council of aging who really is new, hasn't had any real interaction, I think, with understanding elder services. It's all been through someone who was very involved, Lucy, but maybe it'd be a good thing to get elder services involved, either with us or just with the council on aging.
The clarification from elder services, because we checked into it, is that we are not allowed in the kitchen from nine to one, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. It is locked to us, we are not allowed. So we've been bringing in our own water, we have our own coffee pot, Jan's at us a little refrigerator so that we can keep cream. All of that, we provide it, so there's no problem because we've kind of made of our own right now. But it would be nice to have, other senior centers have no problem with having both things. And I don't want to diminish, they do something like twenty-six meals on wheels in that kitchen, not making them, but processing them every day, all those four days. So we don't want to hurt that process in any way. But it is rather disconcerting that we have no access to water, things, other things.
I, I mean, I think at some point there was, because they used to apply for a food permit and that stopped.
Over service.
Yes, yes. And so because it was the council on aging that applied, there was no fee because the board of health opted not to charge, now that we're part of a public health commission. But elder services is outside organization, so different rules could apply.
Contract with all the services.
I have talked with Sudanese and that was, he said, this, this is the bottom line, this, this is the time that you have and so on, so. And we just tried to abide by it because it is an important service.
Yeah. Still want to see the contract.
You shouldn't feel like you're a guest in your own home.
She made the point of saying that they are a guest in our home. She did make that point, but they do need that time to process it, they do. And I'm done.
Library.
We don't have any good updates for you really. I haven't been able to get formal quotes from anyone. Yeah, I just think people have enough time to put them together, something as you know. I do feel confident after looking into all the options that the least expensive was going to be to deepen the existing wall. So, it's over ten thousand, I'm working out and getting a couple of different companies to submit quotes, but that will save money because we won't have to tie it in the existing system. It'll just, as long as it doesn't exceed four hundred, four hundred feet, I believe. Yeah, as long as it doesn't exceed four hundred feet, there will be no additional work to tie it into the building's existing system, so that will save a bit of money right there. I did talk to a company that can drill in the front yards, but because somebody already tried and disturbed all of the earth, now they're worried about putting a giant truck on ground that was just dug out. So that, that would be option number two. But yes, certainly cheaper than either trying to use the well down the road or this well, as we discovered, so. Yeah, a little bit worrisome, but not, I don't have official quotes yet.
Okay.
Yeah, but I do think to deepen the existing wall, yeah, probably around some thirteen thousand is. And then depending on complications or how deep they need to go, no more than twenty, hopefully. But I don't have, yeah, I don't have anything on paper, so I can't go through, but I will send it.
And I think the option of tying into the church and the town hall is a bigger problem.
Yes, yeah, we definitely made clear, we don't. One question I did have for you is, because we're gonna get three different quotes for the work to deepen the well. Do I need, if it, deepening the well is not a separate project, then drilling a new well there? When I'm, in terms of how many quotes am I getting? I also would like to go with the company that spent three days there and didn't get paid a dime, if it makes sense to do so. I'm not, but we're not under necessarily obligation to go with just the lowest, or we are. Okay. Yeah.
I mean, I think ARPA was meant for a project this big. And they certainly need a restaurant facility.
We had already committed six thousand of ARPA money to.
I'd be cold sitting on that porta potty and.
A bit frosty.
I'm writing.
That was intentional. Okay, so it is all a good then, yeah, okay.
Let's know what you.
Yeah, I should have all of that.
Yeah, I'm pleased with the whole camp historical commission. At the last meeting, we gave you two different quotes, one from Jill Petrigone and Tom Petty, but the instruction of the new arch. That thing collapsed about four months ago. And we want to replace the exact duplicate of this one, but our material is not last. So the OCAM historical commission recommended that we use the Tom Petty design, but some people here had some concerns about what he was doing. So we haven't, actually had a meeting with Peter Cross and Phil Wabash and Tom Petty last week. The voice of concerns, you know, we thought it might be a problem. One of the concerns was the footing, both contractors actually wanted to use the same footing that was there. And we had some concerns that footing would start up for the new arch. And basically he convinced us that it would be, he said he, he's not just a carpenter, he's an old timer, he's not old town, but he can hit the cement and say, that's gonna ring like a bell, that's good and solid, you know? And he said it's, it was perfectly level. And, well, we didn't know who put the footings in, I found out later it was Wes Dolly. So that kind of told me it was gonna be good. So we actually did do it by the depth, but it was, you know, I guess just going four feet for a footing to get below the frost line. And this went down fifty-six inches, so. And everything was solid, so they're gonna use that same footing, so we were satisfied with that. Another concern we had was putting, he's using six by six beams on top of this footing. And we were concerned how it was gonna be attached to that footing and kind of convinced that he's gonna put pins in there, he's gonna drill holes into the footing, put pins in there, and he's gonna lock it in with these sinkers he calls, so. It's not gonna move anywhere, and then the fact that it didn't move when the arch fell over means that the footings are in pretty good condition the way they are. So at this point, I think that we want to recommend that we use the Tom Petty quote, and see if we can get money available.
What was the outcome of the building commissioner and the permit?
He basically said, we, we talked to, first of all, we never got a building permit for any of the other arches in town. And we talked to Barry, they put in two arches almost identical to this in Barry, and they never got a building permit either. He kind of said, I don't know what's being built, so I think it's okay. So it's gonna be built off site, basically the whole thing, and it's gonna be assembled on site. So I don't think it's gonna be a problem, building instructor.
Although I think the, there are two bids, one is seven hundred and seventy-four dollars more. To me, it looks like the materials are better quality on the more expensive one. So you're, you're getting more for the higher ones.
Yeah, basically, you know, he's going with six by six inch, the other one was two by sixes and two by fours. And these are four six by six beams inside each column. He's also going with, the other quote was three quarter inch plywood with a quarter inch vinyl cover. And he's going with three quarter vinyl, but there, there does have a kind of sinking the screw holes, you know? So if you don't got a quarter inch and you gotta, you gotta kind of think, at least they financial are concerned, it might crack where you're putting the screws in all the time, you know? If he's got the plywood and the PVC, butted against one another. And if they move all the same, you wouldn't get any cracks, but if they, you know, expanded and contracted different. Not different time.
Different rates.
It might crack where the holes are. The other thing that Tom Petty had that isn't in the Petrigones, I think is he's leaving shims in there to allow air circulation through the arch. The last one apparently had no air circulation except where the holes were in the roof and it brought it out, you know, the whole thing brought it out. He's, he's gonna put wooden shims in there to separate it from the cement and also wooden shims to separate the beams from the vinyl skin over the top of it.
Oh.
And that'll allow circulation through the arch, so it's in a swamp, so it's gonna get damp at some points. What he's saying, if you get the circulation, it'll get damp, it'll dry out. If you don't have the circulation, it's gonna stay damp and it's gonna start rotting, even because all PVC and pressure treated lumber. But eventually, you know, we're trying to have this last as long as we can wait. The first arch lasted a hundred years, that involved a lot of maintenance, I am sure it did, in painting and stuff. And the last one didn't use pressure treated lumber and the thing just rotted away. So this is something that, you know, we don't, he's not gonna give any exact figures. He says it should last at least fifty years and we may hit the hundred year mark, you know, with no maintenance required at all because every center's pressure treated or with PVC, it's gonna have a copper roof over the top of it, so it should never leak. So hopefully with all that, it will last several generations, beyond a lifetime, and probably most of the people in this room's lifetime.
A question please, on the Barbara Pucci East Hill Road. Has the design changed since the last meeting?
No.
And how, how has it gone from needing and requiring a building permit to now it won't be a problem?
I spoke, Philip Warbass East Hill Road, I spoke with the building inspector and convinced him that essentially it's just a sign. Two posts and the sign that says, Nihon Cemetery.
Yeah, he was trying to give us a building permit for a building and it's not a building, you know? And there are sheds that have a certain, it's gonna be like two hundred square feet per shed and you don't need a building permit. And this is, the footprint of this is smaller than a shed that you'd get, you know, put on your property.
Did the building inspector see the design when he told you that it needed?
Yes.
Yes, and so at that point, it did need a building permit, it fit the requirements of needing a building permit.
No, in the discussion, I think it ever, I don't think it ever required a building permit. Simply two columns at sign.
No, we have a building inspector that should know that, though. I'm just wondering why did, it's a building inspector and he looked at the design and said it needed a permit.
That's my question. Don't go there.
I mean, I think if, if, if something ever happened and there was an insurance claim and it needed a permit and didn't have a permit, I think, I think it's important that we know for sure. Is the building commissioner willing to say it doesn't require it on the record?
Back of the Barry had two put up in the last three years with a building permit. You know, so I don't know if they, you know, the problem is I asked them, I didn't, wasn't asking, I tried to find out which quote he preferred. And he says, well, if you get a building permit, now you have to get an architect to, an architectural draw or, and you have to get a contract civic engineer has to oversee the building of this thing. If you go with that stuff, it's gonna be tens of thousands of dollars more to do that. And basically he was saying that if you just, if you build it off site and put it there, you know, I'm not gonna go looking for it.
I, I think I want a building inspector here to talk to us.
I agree, and, and I also have concern about the depleting ARPA funds and, you know, prioritization of expenditures in light of the fact that the well could be twenty thousand dollars. We haven't looked at the school and what the school needs are. Has the historical association looked at grants that could cover the costs? So has the historical commission looked at grants?
We came here and said, was there money available? And you had said, yes, so we didn't even look for grants. The last one was put up, was done with no town funds at all. The first one was put up with no town funds at all. There was only one that was put up with any town funds at all, so this is a, like the town, you know, this is, this is the only cemetery in town that has a book about the cemetery, has all the great people that are buried there with a history of the people that are buried there. You know, the people who made this thing, this, like I said, this is all done with private funds. Unfortunately, one of them spirited the thing, was Eva Grant, who's now across the way. And the other one who wrote this book, goes eating at this and she's in a rehab, it's not rehab, it's a nursing home. And she's gonna be buried in the cemetery. She already got her stone there, she wants to go under this arch, on her way to her resting place.
Would be prepared to take a vote on funding a project that we're not sure will be approved by the building inspector. And we haven't even looked at other departments or the community's input on ARPA fund use.
I'm concerned about, the ARPA, I'm more concerned about the building inspector saying one thing and that's another.
And it's on the record.
I just can't accept you telling me something one day and then I don't see that it's okay. Doesn't matter with me. But let's hold this off before we talk to the building inspector.
I haven't communicated if he, honestly, he did, as I, you guys know, but I haven't heard otherwise. I do, I'll let you know.
So this is opera fund suggestions for use.
Second page is what?
This is the boards and committees' requests, right? I achieve is putting for a radio. Locks on the town hall. And revamping the energy efficient lighting at the public safety building. I guess there's only one circuit up there, so they can't shut individual ones off. You need an electrician to come in.
I missed that, Don, what would you say about the lighting?
Lighting, change the lighting so you can shut individual lights off.
I believe those can be turned down. Safety complex?
Yeah.
I believe those can be turned down.
By somebody in the building or this?
No, you gotta have an electrician turn them down, they can turn them down.
All right, okay.
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
Hey, Don, Steve Dollinger, one fifty seven Robinson Road, sorry, my voice is gone from a wedding. Did you mention radios for the, the police, is that what you said? I couldn't hear you in that.
Fire department.
Yeah, okay, but it would be for both, correct? Because we had talked about that, I think, in previous meetings and Alan can confer with me on that, I don't know.
Police did not put in for radios.
The last we had on that, Don, is Tim was looking at some grants, so we haven't done anything on finance committee side.
Right.
But he, Steve is correct, he did speak at a earlier meeting that they were looking at some grants and they needed those radios for the next two to three years at the maximum.
Yeah, and I can be
It was a while back.
I remember that conversation.
Right, yeah, I haven't seen that even yet, so.
Did you call for grants that covered?
The police chief had applied for grants.
Yeah, so he was waiting to hear back on that, I don't know if you got it.
We, one of those projects. Yes, the burn grant.
Well, there's no confirmation, but he has applied.
So he's applied for those.
The question is, Don, will those radios cover both groups?
The burn grant will.
Yeah, but then you wouldn't need the ARPA funds.
No. I believe burn grant was fifteen thousand.
But that wasn't to find the fire department's radio, though, was it?
There's police and fire.
Oh, was it?
Looks like it. Actually, we would approve. Technology upgrades for hardware software.
Yeah, we, we, we really have no request from the finance committee. Just a general statement the whole group made was, is really a need in this town, as we just heard from the council on aging, to upgrade a lot of hardware and software, and if the funds are there, that's a great place to start utilizing it, because we just miss a lot of it's just a lot that we could do there.
Yep. Library, they already told us the well thirteen to twenty. Police chief put in for a thousand seventy-six dollars for a motor roller package at server. He secured a grant for eleven thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars, he needs an additional thousand dollars. Be able to keep all the body cam recordings on the server.
And that one, I think, because he, he was successful in getting the grant, um, it would be a shame not to fund that one thousand seventy-six dollars from ARPA.
Yep.
I'd be comfortable adding that to the list of
stuff for our office.
Um, a voice to text transcribe software aligned with what Alan had said, some form of technology. And uh the, we, we converted to the Microsoft and it would be nice to be able to have Excel and all that included and not be so basic. So I think that that would be not only for the board of selectmen's office, to anybody who can use that.
So, so Aaron, we had this D. Dollinger again, one fifty seven Robinson Road Finance Committee. So we had talked about this in the last meeting in regards using SharePoint, right? And making our finance more of a collaborative solution where we're having instant updates, right? Where our budgetary process would be more streamlined comparative to, you know, waiting for this department with that department where they can do it on their own time, right? And then we're like in ad hoc meetings and collaborative and like, oh, they're just updating it now and getting this done and we're able to see in real time what's going on, right? We had talked about updating, getting us to the next license level in three sixty-five to be able to do this type of collaboration across departments. And Alan, if you wanna confer to that, I, I'd be willing to hear that, right?
That's kind of what we talked about, I mean, it was just the idea that if there was a way to have a budget almost real time online, so various departments wanna pull in and look at their information and/or update information as they're preparing for the next year. It's all possible, we just don't have the technology yet to do it. But just, that was part of what we talked about as far as this technology upgrades in general will really help the town and then again, there's a lot of ways you can go about it. But that would be one piece of Microsoft three sixty-five that would be a plus.
So Paul from CM Geeks said roughly, nothing's definite, that it would probably be just for the extra of Excel and all that, about ten dollars more, give or take. For each email or for each that's gonna use it, and then that's billed yearly.
So that's a per user license, right? So that means that, so do we just give it to the committee heads? Do we give it to everybody, right? That, that would be an assessment from the board of selectmen. So, and again, you know, we'll talk about this later, but this is where we have to start thinking about licensing. Do you give it to everybody or do you give it to individuals, right? That are department heads and like, all right, so I'm the little man in the town ball, right, in the finance committee, and I'm not trying to be coy about that, but my point being is, I have a bunch of stuff from the school department. And I give it to Alan and he just puts it in the spreadsheet, that's one, that saves us money, right? So again, it's, it's a more of a strategic planning than it is like, let's just spend all of it and just give everybody license. And the way that I look at it from a licensing perspective coming from this area is that, so that our town administrator does not have to do with this. CM Geeks would put people in a, a group, right? So we have a lot of people that come and go. So if you, you're a volunteer position, you, you, you're, I resign, you're removed from that group, we, we save a license. CM Geeks is managing that type of process. And I, I think I mentioned to that to you, Alan, is like, having them manage this process, right? Saves money on our administration as well as saves money on the town for the amount of people that have access licenses, like highway department. The lead of that means that the lead of the, um, the, the police department, if it's the secretary or whoever um, and the police chief, the fire department, board of select, you know what I'm saying? Like, so we don't have to go overboard. Everybody doesn't need this license, right? But a lot of people do. Again, I think it's more of a strategic planning, right? We, we wanna save money, but not go overboard. If that makes any sense, I apologize.
It, it's good to have it on the list, Don, and we, we spent a lot of time on it last week when we met.
Yep.
And it's also, in my opinion, would be wise to move it forward with departments, not create emails with names, because that way you can just pass them over, change the passwords, it can be something in the history. Um, so we started doing that, I know with the new treasure collector, it's that way it's, you can just pass the license over and not have to create a new one.
Um, again, uh, modern and is it modernization um is uh what ARPA is there for, especially for a town like ours. Um, these are small things that get us into the twenty-first century.
And speaking of that, I'll just add that I also suggested get in either, I know that we're limited with space, we don't have a lot of wall space in the lobby. Some form of either wall or freestanding shelving, so we can put all the different applications out there for for town inspectors, anything that's out there instead of, you know, someone coming in is like, where can I find an application? I don't know, let me see if I can find it for you, um, just to have more information out there, bring it up.
But if we, but if we had a SharePoint site, again, I don't mean to interrupt, but if we had a SharePoint site, you wouldn't even need the paper. You just go online, you click and you get it from our O three sixty-five site.
Question, you have a question. Are we covered financially? We're having the whole town covered with internet? Because Steve, we're still waiting. We are still waiting on Lincoln Road for internet.
So, and I I sympathize with you on that, but unfortunately, we have to wait for these unions to make the decision to pull the, to pull the theoretical plug on getting it done, right? They marked all the poles. I have yet to see, I, I've been driving down East Hill Road every day looking for just poles to be put down and look, the thing is, is that we're dealing with unions here and it, it takes time and I want internet here and this is what I've been championing for.
So therefore, when you don't have internet, you cannot go online and download the application.
No, you cannot.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right, and that Mary Bell, I concur with her, for now, we have to do that.
So there's no, there's no need for ARPA funds to include our contract with Spectrum?
We've already dedicated a hundred eighty-six thousand.
And Yan Gobi can't be of assistance?
No, cuz she's not our senator anymore.
Oh, she is in charge of um
Rural Affairs.
And part of rural affairs, and forget, everyone covered with high speed internet.
What we need is
That and, and National Grid with Verizon, because they own the poles, that's the thing. They actually came to my house the other day and National Grid and Verizon are trying to do cleanup work here on Robinson Road, right? And they're, they're doling it out, they're trying to get like people to survey my land. And because I think it's gonna be a big project for them, because it's not just here, they're trying to do a whole thing for our town. And I think we really need to re- reach out, I don't know who owns it, either it's Verizon or National Grid, that's the whole, it's that spectrum. They want us, they want us to spend money. Planning some to people that own the poles, cuz they, Spectrum leases them from pole owner, right? Anytime there's a wind damage, they gotta ask permission to go fix it. So it's been over a year.
Yeah, it has.
And all I can do is cry on a milk bucket and say, extra, extra, that doesn't work, right? You, you need representation from our legislative branch to help us out.
National Grid has already been in cutting trees.
Yeah, they have been.
They've already started that.
Yeah.
The uh
They've completely finished on Grace Lane, they cut the trees and the poles are all up and they're done, so they are doing it clear, I mean, it just, they're doing it in sections, and when I spoke to them, there's another section they were going to after our street. So they, you know, they've got a list, I'm not sure how many different sections there are, I don't think there's a half a dozen or so, and they're working through them. So there is progress being made, I'm defending them because it took a long time, but they, they did finish up on Grace Lane here in the last two weeks.
Well, whatever year they didn't die, you know?
We don't have internet yet, but we have poles, so.
To your point about Yan Gobi, um, I'm gonna give a report on the call I was on, but Yan is willing to come to our next selectmen's meeting to give a report on her role and to hear any of our concerns if we're interested.
Hey, Aaron, so, real quick, a question with that. So she's in charge of rep, so for, again, I read this in one of our local papers. She's in control of reparations due to the Quabin being like flooded and taking away a town and the business for this area, correct? Like reparations in the sense of our area without like large businesses, is that, isn't that correct? Like trying to reap?
She didn't, she didn't explain her role in that way. Um, her role was um that this administration identified the need for increased representation for rural communities.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Yeah, so um, yeah, now I'm gonna give an update on, on the call I had with her at the end.
Thanks, Aaron.
Was from Corey Packin on one forty-eight.
I'm not aware of that, so I can't help you. He, he, he must have submitted that afterwards, we got, we just discussed that at our meeting.
I think it was more personal, he's just had read that they were matching any money spent. So any big, certain projects, bigger ones, um, certain ones qualified, I didn't, you know, go for, go too into it, but it would match.
And about the wall, um, I happened to be in here waiting for somebody from Public Health to deliver something. And I noticed a quit smoking advertisement that you could tear off these get free nicotine patches. Uh, and they expired in June thirtieth of twenty, twenty eleven. Um, so um, um, yeah, so there's a little bit more room on that wall.
Oh.
Because I, I took that down, but I agree, I think, making that area look better.
Yeah, I mean, I know that there isn't a whole lot of space, so I was thinking even something like built around it, like shelving and all the applications for your, you know, board of health, building inspectors, plumbing.
And that wall across has the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, which is beautiful.
I know.
But it's also prime space potentially to have another board. And I don't know if that two fifty could come into relocated to another area.
Yeah, it's tough when you're working with limited space.
Well, we don't need the departments.
In the board of health is meeting on, I'd say, I think, um, and they're gonna talk about the, um, what they would request for which I believe is a
Board of Health has ten thousand allocated, yeah.
And what's the plan for the school?
I don't know, I know that Lucy has been, that's her big thing. I think once the board decides which project they might wanna you know, uh, attack, then it's contact Kevin Clark. Um, for example, that, that wall. He said he could, you know, maybe contact an engineer or someone that would have more information, maybe have Kevin from the highway involved a little bit and, but it just, it all depends on which projects the board.
That's it, no way. But we also received a um notice from the Department of Fire and Water Protection on the public water supply at the Oakham Elementary School. And it has some non-conforming
I think it's a big packet.
Issues with it. And I didn't see anything, I looked through all the board of health emails, the first time I've seen anything about the well there. Um, but I think we need to reach out to the school department and ask them what they, what their involvement has been with this well, but But, but again, we're responsible for it's up here. One of the issues that they identified is that they are storing salt within the, the area of the well. And as a public water supply, you can't do that. They also have a dumpster there. They've got a roadway. So that's one of the issues with having public water supplies is you're not supposed to have those things. So I think there's a deadline.
They're just coming up with this now that
So that's why I haven't seen anything. So I don't know if they somehow decided to do an inspection after 40 years. But then there is a deadline, I think, of sometime in December to fix some of these things.
Was that possibly triggered, Aaron, by the library?
No, that was my thought.
Came up in some of the
My thought initially, but because it looks like they had communication with the school department in July. That's when this inspection happened. So before anything was percolating about the well here.
Paul, in the school agreement, what are they responsible for dollar amount?
I think the way it reads, any, any repairs that are going to exceed $5,000 becomes the town's liability.
Kevin Clark did get a copy of this, I believe.
Yes.
It went to Kevin.
Yeah.
So he hasn't reached out to us in response to it. And it was from October 3rd. It actually looked like they had to do something by today. I know that's 2024.
Update existing emergency response.
That couldn't be too complicated. I think they want to keep the salt. Location of the storage of the salt. I smell. It's stored within zone one. Actually, and it says it only recommends moving the salt storage outside of zone one. If we own the well, we need to make sure that they're following up on that emergency.
Getting information about the generator at the school?
I don't know.
Some issue that they were working on, they're going to get back to us.
About other issues with the school as well, right? In lieu of Lucy being
Yeah, I had seen Kevin a little while ago, he came to drop something off and I kind of had asked him lightly and he said, well, I was just waiting on the board to see which angle. There was, you know, a few different things. So kind of really it's your decision on which one you want to tackle and then.
We also have to step for a estimate before we can make a decision on what we're going to tackle.
Yeah.
So he needs to follow through with what he's saying.
Yeah, because those are the big ticket items that if we can use ARPA rather than going to the town.
Record his access on the same policy.
Is this identical to what was on the website? So what I didn't understand is who are the, who is the officer for like finance committee, board of health, those not specifically?
Those would go, from what I understand, those would go to Christine.
Okay. So that was the only thought that, the only question I had is would we be able to amend it to say in the four?
Four is a condition.
Yeah. Otherwise, I, I think it's very appropriate. So I would, I would move acceptance of the public record access guidelines. If you adopt these as provided here.
Would you?
Yes. Actually, it's you. Yeah. Okay. Sure. So fire chief is one. Police chief, highway superintendent, library director, board of selectman administrative assistant and town clerk. Which I think is great. That is the role and not the individual person.
A second.
Looking to see the advertising for this, what public board wants to go about it.
Need to do as well. Town council told us to do. Make the appointment of the election. That's going to be either way also. But we need an interim in December, December 21st.
So do you, the board would like to post this now for someone ASAP before?
Yeah.
I mean, that would be
Christine mentioned she want
Yeah. Want to make sure of that for that job. And are you how many hours how for funding? So we can post like, like I say, come three hours a week, but if her hours are here.
I would say that if you were asking me from Christine's perspective, I would ask her how many hours you think she needs with this individual. I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to say three hours, right? Or 10 hours is very thought. I mean, she knows what she has to talk to this person.
Where would we take that?
You would probably have to go to reserve.
I mean, I don't
Funds there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can ask Chris because I don't know if she would be willing to do, you know, more or just her assigned or her scheduled hours.
Where are we posting this?
Posted on the website, MMA.
Facebook.
Well, once you post it from the website, you can share it right on Facebook.
And how many hours?
Well, that's, I guess it would be up to Chris as she's in it.
So I mean, like, how many hours does she anticipate that the role needs?
A little bit forward after.
He was talking about giving an intro.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea. There's a lot of work. There's a lot of work coming up with presidential primaries. That's a huge, huge. So maybe trying to get somebody in, then I can kind of show them the ropes, the census that's due first of the year, this dog licenses and this presidential primary. That's going to take up a lot of their time just doing that. Never mind learning the job. So I feel, you know, I've got a few months. If you could find somebody as far as hours, I don't know what to tell you. They, they're, they're going to need, I think the town needs more hours. And I think they're going to need more hours just to learn the job. Once they're in and they learn it after a couple of years, I think, you know, they'll be just sitting in the office and not doing as much, but the state is requiring a lot, a lot. I was up here at 8:30 Friday night trying to certify something. They're, they're constantly on me. So but you know, a lot of cities and towns have full-time clerks. So they don't think anything of it. One example, like the day before Thanksgiving, a lot of offices are closing early. I can't, I have to be open until five o'clock, the nomination papers for the state. Veterans Day on a Saturday, usually it's recognized by the towns on Friday. The state said, uh, 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 you've got to be there till five o'clock. You can't, you know, so it's allotted that extra that the next person coming in, they're going to have to understand this Saturday is involved for this, for the, the presidential election. This, this isn't going to be a cake block for them. So they've got to be ready. So if they want it, then I'm willing to help and I'll always be there, a phone call away. But I think if they, whoever you get here, she, get them on the right footing before I, you know, start to step away. I think that would be in the best interest of everybody. Just even do it. And there's a lot of things to change over. My thumbprint for the state computer, the, the vital records is a whole, I have like four or five different passwords that all have to change through the state. It's, this isn't something that is going to be, you know, I can call up one person and say, okay, I'm done, erase me. That doesn't work that way.
Okay.
So, and that's why I was trying to give enough notice. And I would have loved to finish out till May, but it's just way too much for me right now. It's just the hours that I can give.
Right.
And I don't want, and you know, I can give like more on Thursdays and whatnot, but I just, I, I'm just done. But I don't want to leave on a bad note. I want to leave in, you know, like I said, the presidential primary, you know, I'll be around to help, you know, they have questions, but I just don't want to, I just don't have the time to run it.
Right.
And, and do it fairly for, for everybody.
Okay. So what do you think, knowing that we've got these elections going up until May? What do you think would be the necessary amount of weekly hours?
At least, well, it's hard to say 10, 15. I, they're going to, they're going to need time just to learn that, like the census, the system and to be honest with you, I bring home a lot to open the Mia, correlate it and get it set before I get it into the computer because then I'd be up here all the time. You know, so that alone, people send in dog licenses, which you want because you're trying to get as many people. But then that's separate from the census. So doing, writing dog licenses, you think is easy. It's very, very time consuming. Very time consuming. So, and, and, and early voting. So it's in the beginning of March for the presidential primary. I would think pretty soon, right? In the beginning of January. So state's going to start with that and, you know, probably telling you the dates for, you got to pick for early voting and that will include, I guarantee at least one weekend, a Saturday and Sunday. So yeah, I mean, you're better off doing yeah, you know, I, I won't be here the whole time, but if I can show that person how to do certain things, they obviously can't because you have to be a town clerk in order to even get into the state computer. But I mean, I can show them other things that they can learn to do or even get, start getting the census ready. You know, I mean, I, I can print it up and they can, you know, learn how to use the machine or just sit there and fold them like I've had to do for years. And you know, that takes a long time. So I mean, there's things that.
And another question that I had was, he says where the funding is coming, what would be the rate? You know, that's something for you guys to discuss.
Yeah, because they're not going to do it for nothing and rightfully not, but yeah, and, and I mean, this is just like I said, an interim until May. And I, and this is another reason too. I thought, well, it would be better because then the townspeople could decide is an elected versus appointed. And everybody can see how everybody works. So when it comes to me and you have that, that question on the ballot, you know, I think it would be less, you know, maybe more people would be more for appointed or say, no, I want to keep it. I, I don't know. And it all depends on who you get in. If the townspeople like this person and we've invested in a lot in this person. It might be an easy vote for everybody to say, yep, we want to make the position an appointed position. But that person, if the person lives in town, regardless, will have to go on the ballot just in case.
Yeah, question please. Barbara Puch, East Hill Road East. Christine, is there a association for town clerks or something in Massachusetts?
Because that might be a good resource. Oh, yeah, yeah. I get them all day long with, with the state of Massachusetts has a huge turnover of town clerks right now in commencement for a while. A lot of, when I first came in 23 years ago, I was like a baby. I'm here to, who was out there. Now all the, the older ones just said, I'm out. You know, so yeah, they were, yeah, constantly every day I'm looking at messages that like, oh, I just got this, I'm a new town clerk. I just got this in. What do you do with this? And they get back to you really quick. It's a whole big network. Yeah.
Maybe that's a place to advertise this position.
And also, yeah, I mean, maybe if they know, but I can't see another town clerk. You've got to remember they're running elections. You, you, I can't see another, maybe, maybe there's someone who can do it. So I thought sometimes associations like that will have places where you can post positions.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a good, and they're doing a lot more training. Like when I started, the training wasn't out there, but because the turnover of so many clerks, there's a lot of training out there. You know, I just don't go because I've been doing it for so long. And it's like, I, I just can't sit through all the questions because I already know them. So that's why I don't use the association a lot because I already kind of know. And, and if I miss a meeting or if I don't go, I get PowerPoints anyway sent to me. And and if I miss a meeting or if I don't go, I get PowerPoints anyway sent to me, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay.
So we still need to know a rate, but I definitely think it should be posted for fifteen hours, up to fifteen hours. Seven thing extraction. What did he do that in that? Negotiable. And that's right with experience. Right now.
To get free parking.
And we have water in this building. Hasn't been tested yet.
Uh, next up is special town meetings, that's the second day.
So I talked to Lori and she said that she's wrapping up year-end stuff and it's looking good, so she's hopeful that it'll be, you know. End of this week, even maybe at the latest by next week. And she felt comfortable with the board. You know, picking a date or definitely picking a date. Or special town. Last year we did it the Monday after Thanksgiving.
That worked well. I mean, you've got to give it time.
Because you have to, a special has to be posted for fourteen days, so. And then you have to open a warrant, at least for whatever you guys choose, so.
And you don't want to get too close to the holidays, you have a Christmas, I mean, if we don't stay close to Thanksgiving, don't.
Getting it back to KP and back and forth.
We did December fourth, it's a Monday. It's plenty of time. Hope she's good. KP and back.
Yeah, that would work on our work. And we're giving all the boards and departments an opportunity to. Send them out. They can submit.
Yeah, and then you guys have to decide when you want to open the warrant. So the boards are not that can be.
And it it can stay open for, it doesn't have how many days it can stay open.
So we'll put, open the warrant at the next meeting.
Want this one about regular meetings.
I won't put anything on the agenda.
Once you guys then open on the thirtieth, then we send something out to upwards and. Guys can decide how long you want to keep it open for.
December fourth, so I may, I move that we. Set the special town meeting for December fourth at seven P M. at the fire station.
Both committees authorizing the senior grants to be signatories. The paperwork. See what we ran into. That particular page, that particular forms would. You can have the authority to sign that. That's just saying that the person signing would actually grant. You don't need to get all of that.
I could, the chair of the board department also sign. If they're an employee.
Yes, third line person that signed. If you're the chair, you can't sign both.
Okay, okay.
That's the problem.
Okay, so they can, any board can submit a grant, but they need a town employee to countersign?
To to authorize that signature. So you wanted to write a grant, you have to have somebody authorize your signature to sign. Just the only person. If you do that. We're running into this problem.
I just want to make sure that. We're empowering the boards. They have permission to apply for grants. No, we don't need to pre-approve it. So there should never be a holdup. It's just a a signature.
It's all before.
Yes, that form was the signatories allowing them to do it. And then what I needed additional was to notarize Barbara's. Signature.
Is that going forward? Because I just filed two grants with the Arts Lottery Council.
If you guys made a motion to allow you, a fund agent.
Just one issue?
So.
Yeah, the. The notary part or the signatory? Yeah.
Not all of them required, no.
No.
Some required.
Yeah.
Federal branch that wants a town clerk. This would be a lot easier. And we all have that to wait until we're meeting.
And like you said, it doesn't mean we have to accept the grant.
Ultimately can refuse the grant. Now, every grant that's been written, they've come to us and said, this is what we're applying for. So we know what's going on, it's not secret, you know.
And then what's the? The other question I have is the process for accessing live, life. Because in her email, it looked like there was still some question.
This is what we just, we just. By having her certified signatures.
Yeah, but how do you initiate? So if if we want to apply for, if they want to apply for another grant. Can they just contact her directly? Because that's incurring a cost or?
Well, usually they tell us.
Okay. So that's not going to change. So approval for application for grants, using the grant writer.
They they tell us. First, first use them a couple of times.
Anytime you use the grant writer, that requires the permission, but otherwise. You bring it to be signed to submit. I would move that we authorize the administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen to sa- to sign. Signatory pages for grants. From boards and committees. For grants. Departments.
Okay.
Yep. Town hall, cleaning and organization. I would volunteer to. Help lead the organization in the, it's called the attic. The top floor, which has things going back to the seventies and earlier, some things tipped over. Ballots from two thousand and two. We've got the Massachusetts Guide to Public Records Law, which also talks about the, how long you need to. Keep records, but many of those things upstairs could be shredded. We don't need to keep. I wouldn't want to initiate the destruction, but I think organizing it to understand what we have. And then to be prepared potentially to dispose of things that we don't need to keep any longer. Also, you know, Parks and Rec uses that space appropriately. So if we could ask them to clean it, ask the Board of Health to kind of organize its little corner of the world. But the, it looks like the, that beautiful auditorium was just kind of. Kept in the state that it was in. And even though it can't be used for the public, I'd be happy to volunteer and get volunteers to. Start to organize without disposing of anything. Do we need to have people apply to be a volunteer? I saw a volunteer application.
An application for that.
I mean, there is, I don't know.
Okay, so probably should if they're going to be.
Grant, social media.
I would propose that creation of a social media policy be a work meeting. Where it is the primary focus of discussion. The MMA has. Other resources, webinars on drafting social media policies. They have other communities. Social media policies and compliment and pages, which I think is basically what everybody is using. Yeah, yeah. The light and tap least, and I have one, but that we spend a dedicated hour kind of looking at. And and getting input from boards, committees and departments, because they do give different examples of. A employee versus a elected board committee. And. So before we would vote on a policy, I'd like to just make sure that we've given all the stakeholders an opportunity to. To be heard, give input. But I think this, the sample that compliment gives is is great. But I think it would be good to give everybody an opportunity, since we do have a Parks and Rec page or two. We have a Board of Health page, we have a library page, we have a town of Oakham page. Kind of looking at all of those and with the effort, the emphasis that we're trying to be transparent, get information out. On what's going on, I will say that there were several comments on the day of the election about, we didn't know there was an election and. So I I think the more we can use these tools to inform. The fact. And having a policy is certainly the basis of that. Yes, yeah, and and I, I mean, we can give this and maybe even this, this was from the MMA. And just letting them know we're working on putting together a policy, which would impact them, because if they have Facebook pages or whatever, now. We want to make sure we're not going to shut somebody out based upon a policy. But I would, I just think having this on the agenda, maybe in the next two months. Doesn't necessarily have to be done today or next month, next week, but.
Steve Dodger, one fifty-seven Ramisford again, and so you see a social media policy. Are you saying that the town would control the content that's being procured on there through a centralized voice?
No, it's, there are, there are guidelines by compliment and page that. Allow boards and departments to, within certain parameters. To freely be able to appropriately communicate using that and following public records requirements, when you can. Edit something.
Correct, yeah.
It's something we don't have today.
No, no, I totally agree. I was just wondering what the context was of that, like, so. Would that include moderation?
Yes, that is part of the sample clause.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I would even say, because so many boards only meet monthly. We probably need to at least give boards and committees at least a month to to review it. But maybe the second meeting in December before the budgets get crazy. Yeah.
I'll take whatever, anything else that you want, you know, just to reply.
And I don't think we have anything on the webs, the use of the website, but I think that should also be something that we look at. You know, some boards and committees are using the calendar. But certainly, I would put. The primaries on there, the next election, the the May election on there, because it was not on there.
Yeah.
That's the clerks.
But, so my, my concern is that. Is the town leaders, someone needs to be ensuring that communication is happening. So I don't know whether we have to request that these things get done from an elected individual. Or or do we have at least the ability to indicate from a previously that the board approved setting the warrant for an election? To at least put the election date. And I I would ask that, you know, we put for our selectman meetings, I mean, they're every two weeks, we should be able to just schedule them out for the next year.
I I mean, I put them up.
Yeah.
But I mean.
The thirtieth is already posted.
Oh, really? Okay.
So Steve Dodger again, one fifty-seven Ramisford. So what we need to do, from a technology standpoint, and this is just. Me being in my industry, is that we could integrate our three sixty-five calendar. And schedule them, it would be so much easier and less time on our administrator to do so. So all she needs to do is send an invite to an email address and it would just automatically populate that calendar. And that's just my opinion. Again, we have a lot of part-time employees here, having people manage things. Through manual tasks, like having to go on the website separately than managing on the calendar. It's a lot of work. But if we're able to integrate that, or we're able to just send an email to a calendar, to like a, it's called a distribution list. Or a a resource box where it's a catch-all, that. Saves us a lot of time and it is very efficient. My two cents.
Wonder if we could get Civic Plus to come in and and talk to us about the website. Because it's, I think we underutilize it, I mean, it was set up in twenty twenty.
With that being said, there's, and this is before you were even on the board. I T grant that was pursued and. A little bit, but it's going to be to hopefully be able to spruce it up, get more options. But we'll see, hopefully we can capitalize and get some money on that grant and and be able to do all that. But we'll see, hopefully we can capitalize and get some money on that grant and, and be able to do all that. But that will also be very time consuming and to do the process of the migration of Carly and then setting it up and tweaking it, so. But it would be great if we got the funds.
I mean, I look at, you know, the fact that we're handwriting dog permits. Other towns, it's all an application online. And so with the Civic Plus, they have the, the government. Website that integrates with that for online permitting, so we're not time consuming, you know, inefficiently handwriting things.
The only thing is that I, you know, was a little concerned about is just then, you can get all this funding, you can add these. But then it's the annual upkeep afterwards, how you're gonna sustain those fees. I mean, I think right now, our basic website is a little over two thousand dollars. Increasing it just to the next phase that you're looking at. I mean, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but it was.
Five thousand.
No, I think more than that. But it just depends also what you want, so then, you know, they'll give you all the numbers and then you can tweak it, say, no, this one, we're not gonna take, so then add it. But yeah, we're looking at a, at least a double, probably a little more than double.
I do concur, yeah, I concur with Marygo. Because what you're stating in and out of the technical term, so one of the things is, is that. It's called an application protocol integration, API calls. Those change all the time, there's vulnerabilities, so that needs to always be looked at. From our town website so that we're not, so that we're in compliance from a security standpoint. And, you know, yeah, that does cost, that does incur a cost to us, but is need to modernize.
But the next step would be total investment of roughly for the grant, you know, twenty. One thousand dollars roughly, but then the yearly upkeep for that would be. Almost seventy-five hundred dollars a year. So that's just that step and then if we, you know, they had some add-ons, a button where you can, you know. It's called a secret big, so you can submit requests or, you know, problems or, you know, and it'll have a dropdown menu of which department you want, again.
John, if I could suggest, I, I think you're getting into an area that's, you're very expensive.
Yes.
Now, and we've had this discussion before, we've had some of the special town meetings, some of the funds that have approved for one-time funding. Director of the senior center, which I pull his port, but that was a special town meeting, one-time funding for, I think it was ten thousand dollars. And then it had to be part of the budget each year going forward now. And so give it to the budget, I think we've got to talk these things through because, as you know, last year we were getting down to dipping pretty deep into free cash. Yep. So again, they're all great ideas and I, I think they're great ideas, but we've got to be able to take one.
And, and my point has been that we, we should at least be looking into them. And I don't know, as a, someone on a board since two thousand and fifteen, we've never, the Board of Health has never been part of. Any of these new modernizations. And I think, you know, we've, we've implemented on the Board of Health, online applications. We use the website, we post our agendas, we post our minutes. So honestly, I'm, I'm very satisfied with what we have available in the current state. I don't know that other departments are, I know other departments are not using it.
Oh, I know for sure.
So even if they brought it up to what we're paying for now, would be better than what we have. But I, I think that there should be a conversation, a study of what can we do, how can we do it the cheapest, but modernize where it can. And there are things that are as simple as an online form that we do for a well permit, which. You, they're entering their information and all you're doing is printing it and signing it. So you're not manually entering, for example, a dog's information, it is populating right in there. And the, the applications come through, give notice, and that's part of our current software.
And how did Board of Health get that? Like, how do you have that software?
It's built into what we have now.
Okay.
You're saying it's there, it's just not utilized by everybody else.
I, I was part of, I was given access right when we got it and went to town on creating online applications. So I just don't think that we've. Yeah, explored all that it offers. Yeah, and so all. All boards of selectmen, towns, town administrator, managers, et cetera, received an invitation. To the first check-in call with Ann Goby, Director of Rural Affairs. I attended it last Thursday morning from nine thirty to ten, I think. And she's holding these meetings weekly, there were about forty-five people in attendance. And probably ninety-five percent of these small rural towns were town administrators or town managers. I think there were three who indicated that they were Board of Selectmen. And so she's holding these forums weekly and there were topics discussed, it was around Rob and just, you know, throw out your concerns. Public safety and highway spending, the increasing costs, DESI, education funding. And what it's causing, putting the borrowing limits and, and that something is to be done to exempt. When the school budget comes in and it's already gonna exceed your two and a half. So she says they're actually looking at something with that to exclude that from. What towns were able to raise because it's unfair, because you're being forced to not increase your town services and. Over a budget that you have no control over, so that was one of the topics. Roads for rural communities, the, the way that the funds are allocated. These individuals felt that it negatively impacted rural communities. The availability of federal grants. Apparently there was a, recently a meeting, STAM, Small Town Administrators, I don't know, do we get information from them?
Ah, I think.
Not since I've been on.
Yeah, that's probably where I would see it, I'll look to see.
So Ann connected me with the director of that and said we were more than welcome to be part of that. So they, they've actually been holding small town administrator forums with Lieutenant Governor. Where small towns have been able to go and be heard on their local issues. And so one of the topics discussed was the federal grants that are available. The building, the fact that our rural communities, town halls, highway department buildings, police department buildings. Are crumbling in some cases, that there needs to be special focus from the state on supporting rural communities with, with those. Two and a half override and school funding, community television. And she did say that she was willing to come to that, to our next meeting and let Oakham know how she can help us. And she did, they did send out that recap of the meeting. As well. But it was a very good meeting and New Braintree was on. But it's nice to see that rural communities are getting some attention. And it sounds like, you know, with this STAM, that the Lieutenant Governor is actually giving some attention to rural communities. And part of that, I wanted to say that there were sixty-two towns with less than two thousand residents. According to the twenty twenty census. And fifty-seven of them are smaller than Oakham. And I would just point out that forty-two of those that are smaller than Oakham have a town administrator, town manager. Or a town coordinator. And as we look at, you know, the challenges of trying to be a town clerk with the increasing requirements. And what that means, you know, Foreign Health had to hire an administrative clerk. I, I, I think we really need to look at our budget for the future. How we need to staff outside of the every other week for selectmen meetings. So forty-two have someone running the day-to-day operations and they're smaller than Oakham. And so as we're, as we're budgeting, I think we have to look down the road of whether. The Board of Selectmen being the primary leader is gonna be effective. And I do plan on attending on the Thursday meetings going forward. Yeah, it is, yeah.
Aaron, if there's anything that comes up regarding the disparity with the school budget versus the town budget that we can help with. I mean, that, that is, that, and from our perspective, I'd say that is the number one issue the town faces, is we cannot continue to go forward. With our, our budget increasing by one percent and the school budget increasing by seven and a half, eight percent, we just can't afford that.
And that was, that's anything we could do. There was a chorus of people singing that song.
It's a problem.
Question about the lights on the common. Who's responsible for the two lights that are out?
Oh.
On election night, it was pretty dark out there. So, yeah, right across from the library, the two closest, I don't know if there's a committee, commission, highway. Who is responsible for changing those light bulbs or if it was intentional to save electricity?
I don't think it's intentional, I'm not that I'm aware of. But, cause the other ones are on, right?
Yeah, on the opposite side showing that house.
Yeah.
Maybe we shut those lights off and.
The, the business, the, the police chief had mentioned me yesterday. He wanted to be on the agenda, the next agenda to hire two part-time officers. I think we need a lot more information before we go down that road.
Ron and Aaron, if I could interject here, I think you need to go to the budget. You need to look at the spending of the police part-time right now because they're at a pain. Basically, I don't think of what they were doing before we agreed to the full-time chief. And they're not, we haven't seen the hours go down, we haven't seen the spending go down the way we expected. So you guys, I, I don't know if you looked at that, but I was gonna bring it up after the meeting, just to get you a look at it.
That's why he's not here. But I looked at it last time, last month, it was sixty-six percent for me.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's down a half, it's less than half.
Way too low.
Yeah, he's, he spent sixteen out of twenty-six or something like that, if I remember.
Right.
Year to date, and it's only three months.
I, I don't know how he's gonna train these guys. How he's gonna outfit them. This is the stuff we need to hear, and why do we need them?
And how's he gonna save within the budget to do so?
Well, that's the big thing.
That's, I mean, he's just been very.
I know we're getting reimbursed nine thousand dollars. That may just brings back up to the fifty percent level, but.
And then we're not even halfway.
We don't know what's gonna happen. Anything that happens during the winter, you know. So we, we need to have him to talk about this stuff.
We'll, we'll be here, because we, that was a pretty big topic at our meeting last week.
Okay.
Could you help me understand, I know that the town meeting approved. The salary for a part-time and approved part-time police officer salary. The contract, the selectmen approved utilizing the part-time approved line items to cover the cost.
You transfer part-time money to the full-time.
Which makes that whole, what, it, it, it must have left money, obviously, for part-time, but.
We budgeted for the remaining hours that he has, just thirty-two a week. So that would be sixty-four every pay period and this last pay period, I think is a hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
That can't continue.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, because the, it wasn't, we, we would be going outside of the town meeting vote as well as the transfer of.
I don't know, no transfer of anything.
Right. I mean, but it already has been transferred within the budget.
Oh, yeah, the budget is, yeah, yeah. If it runs out of money for part-time in January, I guess he's gonna be answering all the calls, and it's on salary. I think he's right either, but you gotta hub and weave here.
Yeah.
You know, so I just want him to be aware of that. And that's why it's not on this agenda, it'll be on the next one.
He just dropped that off today, I think that's on BHT, it's gonna be on their next agenda. They haven't recorded any of the compliances that they needed for. Yeah, for the Amherst, that's a company, yeah, so he recommends not. Giving them any licenses or renewing any licenses, rather.
December will be renewing, last three licenses. If they haven't recorded, what the planning board told them to. We don't need licenses. Follow through with this.
And this is the former. But is there, there's nothing left there, right? But it. But it's still permitted for its former use?
Well, because the company that buys is Copat, similar.
Okay, okay.
Last night talking to this guy, Copat has not signed the partnership. They have multiple projects nationwide and we're not that free. Forget to it, but in the meantime, they're gonna lose their license. That's. I think we're just gonna take care of that. Or whatever the old business.
I would just wonder in, on a future meeting, we can get an update from the, not sure what the official title of this committee is, but the Cable Access, Cable Internet Committee. I know Stephen has done yeoman's work to get us where we're at, I'm curious, we still have to do. The instructions that Board of Health is planning on being here on Wednesday or Thursday, whenever the meeting is. And we were hoping to use this, but if we could kind of just get an update on what's next. On a future meeting.
We also need the cable committee to tell us what they're doing for the public hearing for a license that's due in January. That's up to them, so. That's some information. Steve, do you know who the chair is now?
Steve resigned from the cable committee, okay, make sure you remember that.
Yeah, that's what I want to know.
He may not know.
I will figure it out. Respondents, the correspondents.
Oh, I have under old business, excuse me, I have. I have, um. The Zoom licenses. This is a quote that Steve got from Zoom. Um. In regards to, instead of having a meeting room.
Yeah.
Having individual licenses. So this has the price there. I know that the meeting room fees were funded with ARPA. But it would need to be signed and voted if if the board wants to proceed with it.
I think we already discussed this.
He was going to, Friday, he was going to be meeting with Zoom.
Yeah, so that would be that paper.
Yeah.
I think it's a. It's. Yeah, a little over a thousand.
Thousand seventy forty-three.
And what do we pay now?
Well, we paid with for the Zoom meeting. Um, I think that was.
I might show you it's a non-budgeted item.
That was on the, I think it changed.
I was more than that.
Two thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety cents. That was for the meeting room.
For two meeting rooms, it was two thousand and four licenses, it's a thousand.
And how many licenses are in there?
But it sounds like it's less for.
A license in a meeting room?
Hmm.
Again, then it would be a matter of the board determining, you know, who has.
Board license.
Oh, yeah. However. And if you want to proceed, where the funding would come. At that.
You do old business here, right, right now?
Yes, I'm just surprised that it's, I mean, I I originally was hoping we were going to go with individual licenses, but. Believe it was the recommendation to go with your room, so I'm curious when to lie. And I don't think the Cable Internet Committee had anything to do with, but I think initially they were involved, but. And they were. I mean, I just think it's it's more access, more flexibility. We could be at the, um, fire station and and do it. Um. It it's just more movable. And achieve.
We've already paid for the other one, so it's going to keep the meeting moving.
For the year.
Yeah, I think that's the yearly fee.
Unless we can get out of it. Get a refund. Yeah, yeah.
With the licenses like that, then you would have to generate like a meeting every time. It won't be the same login and the same.
Unfortunately, I know it all too well. It's my daily life. I've weirded. It's unfunded, so. Our only available options are ARPA.
That's what that rule was paid on.
Yeah.
Again, Aaron, same thing. I mean, you start allocating hyper funds to pay for one time, you're committing the talent to something that you may not have the budget for a year or two. I think you should have a plan as to, is it really going to be part of the budget going forward and what's the best? Long-term plan, not just throw the extra money out and say, we got it now. What do we do in twelve months?
And do we need, does the town needs time?
Well, no, I don't know that it does need time, but I will say that I think. It is long overdue that we have accessibility with, um, web-based remote access. And that should be part of a town service, um, that we've not funded.
I would agree a hundred percent. I'm just saying that you've got something working as a first step, which is the meeting. This may be something that you've got to spend some time deciding how you want to implement it before you.
Did we turn any money back in the IT budget? You know?
You're talking under the Board of Selectmen?
There's two.
There's two, I don't know why there's two, but there's.
Yeah. Yep. May I say something while that theme looked at by repu to East Hill East? If the licenses would make it easier for all of the boards to do this, you know, to do the recording and offer the, um, hybrid meetings. That that would. Be a very good thing.
I agree.
Website you got, you turned in. That's, uh, I've got to get to a different file going. I think you you had some leftover I'm going to have to get to it. I was like, that's pulled up is the current year. You'll, you'll actually hang on. You want to go ahead? I'll look it up once you know the.
I mean, could could Maribel or or someone reach out to Zoom? I mean, I don't know if only Stephen can do it, but we probably should begin to switch over. Some of the contacts, but can we negotiate with Zoom to convert? Um.
I can tell you that the bill has not been paid yet for the meeting room. Money's allocated. We were way down W nine and all that, so that was intended to go in the next warrant.
Oh.
So if they can, I will talk to Steve and see if they, that's what a step you guys would rather go.
But I I I think. You know, without asking the boards and committees, I think five would be fine. Um. For licenses. Which would that cut that down to five hundred.
Yeah, this is what I'm saying. Be five hundred now.
Which to me is not a huge cost when it gives people access.
It's just five licenses, right? So let me get all that information gathered, see what we can do with the other one, what the cost for a new one is, and then put it on the next agenda again.
It's good, that's good information.
Well, back it brought up that Phoenix is going to be running underground with Hopefully. Um, if down order the insurance company application, they have. Um, they're going to send a COI.
They did. Yeah, we already have it.
Right, did you? Now, my other question, do you want to set a fee on that?
What have you done in the past?
We haven't had.
So, I don't.
No.
They didn't have a hearing, just said.
They don't want to buy, you know, they want to get going on this, on this underground.
That's another road that doesn't have internet. That they're somehow funding. Yeah, I don't think we should delay it if somebody's willing to get it done and the highway superintendent has seen the plan and can ensure it's going to not ruin our.
Well, I've already told them there's no cuts in the road. You get them all under the road.
Yeah.
Uh, they're going to have to cut across driveways. Um, but everything needs to be restored the way it is now. The trenching or there's grass growing. It needs to be restored with the original.
You wish you missed.
This is the first one I ever done. I went online, downloaded that and come up with that, meant to put a seal on it like it's O Kim, so.
That's how many boards and committees have that mentioned. Did you take out someone else's town's name? Because I've done that.
No, no, I didn't have the, I have the.
The template.
Yeah.
Little template, I put a seal on the one.
A gentleman came in and I gave him the application that was there.
Can't charge it free because we don't have a.
Yeah.
Fee schedule for that. Review our fee schedules and have it in. We can't charge that. I have a problem with.
Should be able to. Do that.
He's not, that's going to deal with it, not us. Anything else? That's it. Next up is executive session. Go into executive session, chapter thirty-nine, section twenty-three, B subsection three, contract negotiations with non-union personnel, highway superintendent, only to come out through adjournment.
Go into executive session. Have to read all that.
It deserves.
Okay, I will stop the recording. Good night.